The chairman are cultural issues, religious, spiritual or moral issues, human rights issues, legal issues, scientific issues. Well, I think the slide you're behind me. Next one, please. Yeah, that's right, yes. So I will leave the first four. As there are other aspects who talk about them, and I'll talk about a scientific approach. So I'm limiting my presentation to the science of it. Now, they say it's common. How common is it?
Next slide.
Do I control it from here? We have it. So just about 1% to 3% of any society, anywhere in the world, are homosexuals. The vast majority are straight. So if you look at it, what you have here, 97% to 99% are straight. If only 1% to 3% of a society, how do you say it's so common that you want to consider as normal? Next slide. Okay, so then, no wait. So Ghana situation is that just about, we don't have accurate figures, exact figures, but about an NGO did a study and said there are about 650,000 people in Ghana with a homosexual tendency. And I'm using homosexual to represent the majority of all the letters, LGBTQI, all those. And that of the 650, 350 are in Accra, 250 are in Tahrir, 50,000 elsewhere, including Kumasi. If you bring all this, you come to about 0.02% of the Ghanaian population. How can you say 0.02% is a common phenomenon and therefore is common? Now, for the 97% or who have people become homosexuals, many people learn homosexuality as a habit. And only a few are born with a homosexual tendency. So the argument that they are born in with only a few, 6.7% are born with it. A 3 point, 93, 6.7, so 93%, they are not born with it. So any argument that they are born with this, so it's normal, is false. Now-
Mrs. Chairman, Doctor, this statistics that you are giving, is it 93% of the homosexuals or 93% of all the population? Of the, there is 93% of the 0.02%.
Exactly.
Okay.
So only 1% to 3% are homosexuals. And of the 3%, 0, 6.7% of them, of the 0.3%, are born with it. So it means that the majority are actually not born with it, they learnt it. And also learnt it, how do they learnt it? From peer pressure. My peers are doing and they force you into it, like addiction and other such behaviours. They force you either simply out of adventure and curiosity. Oh, let me try it. And then you try, eventually you get into it. And then some of them from-
So, Doctor-
Yes, please.
Please, from your, from where you are coming from, as a special, yes, I understand, but to understand, we need to go with him.
Sure.
Are you saying that some people or a very minute percentage are actually born with that?
Precisely, are actually born with that tendency. And therefore the majority, this is how they get it. In fact, if you look at schools, girls' schools, supi-supi, that gives a basis. Some of them eventually then become lesbians. Others simply commercial sex worker, economic reasons. And I can testify, somebody who actually came from outside and he was homosexual and he says he went into it because his scholarship was cut and he had no means of surviving. But he got back anyway, he converted back. There are others who are for aversion of the opposite sex as in childhood defilement or rape. And so they develop a certain hatred for the opposite sex that defiled her and becomes lesbian. Because any time she sees a man, say, ah, it reminds her of what happened. So with all that, can you say it's normal? Then they will ask you, who are you to tell me that my condition is abnormal? Mrs. Chairman, there is a scientific way of determining what is normal. So it's not left to people's quins and caprices to say, yes, you are abnormal, you are abnormal. Normality is determined by the frequency of appearance, not by birth, scientifically. If you have a population and one or two out of 30 million or so, just hypothetically, is the frequency that determines whether you call it normal or abnormal? It is not whether you were born with it or not, and I'll count to whether you're born with it. There is what you call Bell's bell curve or Gaussian distribution, which shows, let me quickly go to that aspect, this is what you call bell curve. Anybody who's undertaking some research will see. So the majority fall within the blue up to this end. Anything at the extremes are abnormal. So this distribution enables us to know what is normal, what is abnormal. So anybody tells you that, look, my condition is normal for me, it is false. There is a scientific determination of what is normal. And I'm saying that 1% to 3% of the population as homosexuals cannot be set with normal because they fall outside the Gaussian distribution. Having said so, the other question is, is it mental illness or not? By definition, yes, it is mental illness. It is. And by the way, mental illness does not mean the person has gone naked on the streets. You could be mentally ill and yet very well dressed. So the fact that a person may be well dressed does not make the person normal or well. In fact, by definition, it is, and you go through why, how we define something as mental illness. We have a criteria, a set of criteria for diagnosing mental illness. So if you hear somebody has depression, somebody has schizophrenia, the person satisfies these five criteria. In fact, the first four are mandatory. The fifth may or may not be there. So there must be a departure from the norm. Departure, that means abnormal from the Gaussian distribution. It, that departure must be severe. That departure must be persistent. And it must cause pain or distress to the person or the society. So if I have a certain behaviour that causes me pain or causes pain or distress to the rest of the people plus the three others, by definition constitutes mental illness. And the fifth is that it may be associated with other abnormalities. It may, because it's not always so. There are some conditions that we call a second cried abnormality. That is a mental illness. Now, these days, if I, if you pull this argument, the degenerate science, and I say degenerate, will say, oh, but you've removed sexual perversion from the list of conditions just to satisfy an ideological standard. They deliberately remove sexual perversion. So they'll look at all those things and say that once they remove the sexual perversion, then the fact that it causes me pain or anxiety will not be a matter for definition by source. Now, how does homosexuality that we say that we are removing from the list of abnormalities, it used to be in a class of conditions? And those things still remain. Pedophilia, a 60-year-old man decides that my interest in sex is to go for a 2-year-old girl and not just once, that is my persistence. Pedophilia is abnormal, is mental illness. Somebody decides that me, my interest is to go for somebody who is dead, a dead person, and not just once, that's my tendency. Nikophilia is mental illness. Somebody decides that my interest is with animal, bestiality or zoophilia. It is mental illness. Somebody decides that mine is to smell the panties, the undies of a woman and then I get my sexual gratification. Feticism is mental illness. Somebody decides that me, I'll pique, tom piqueism, look at, into the hole to see a naked woman, woman bathing, and I get my sexual gratification voyeurism is mental illness. Somebody decides that me, I will stand in a queue behind a lady and rub my genitals at his buttocks and get my gratification through terrorism is mental illness. Now, homosexuality used to be in this, all this class. Now, just because of political pressure, you've taken it out and left the remaining. Now, imagine a man filling his water tank with fuel, or well tank with water. Would you consider this person normal? Or at a restaurant, he takes the food, he puts it into his ears or his nose or behind? Would you consider that abnormal? And that is similarly what is happening with homosexuality. Now, there are associated harms, psychological harms, physical harms, social harms. I'll leave them to my colleagues, but there are harms. So if anybody says that it causes nobody harm, that is false. Now, with all that I've said, why do scientists still insist that it's normal? Well, some, because I am and I don't take it. So why do some scientists say it's normal? And why is it officially so-called recognised as such? There's a history behind it. Indeed, all those who went to the medical school prior to 1960, read in the books that homosexuality was an abnormal condition, a mental illness. And then American Psychiatric Association decided to codify, psychiatric conditions into a document they call DSM, Diagnostic and Statistical Manual. And then they put it there as homosexuality is a psychiatric disorder. Then the gay society in America came together strongly, political pressure, to force the American Psychiatric Association to say, how dare you say our condition is abnormal? So the psychiatric society actually bit a retreat. They conveyed an opinion pool among themselves, 10,000 people responded. The question simply was, do you think it's normal or should consider mental illness or not? 10,000 responded and 50, just about 50% said, no, let's say it's, it's normal based on peer pressure. Then another group said, no, no, you can't accept it. So let's conduct another group. There, 6,000 responded. 69%, almost 70% said, look, let's go back to the point that it's abnormal. But because of the peer pressure, the political pressure, they just let it remain as normal and not abnormal. So in 73, they gave the final verdict by just a, I mean, the Board of Psychiatric, by simply voting. So you realise that this is a position that was taken not based on science, but purely political ideological pressure. Science does not take decisions that way. We were not taught scientifically to reason that way. Science has a rigid method of reasoning, not based on vote.
Okay. In seven minutes' time, you would have done 30 minutes, please.
Okay, okay. So, and then when the American Psychiatric Association decided on that, there was no African input. In fact, the British came and said, no, we can't accept, French came, they said, no, we can't accept. There was no African input, maybe our fault. But then 73, how many psychics were there? Even if you say so, they'll say, your numbers don't matter. Then based on that, WHO and ICD changed their position that is, is normal. How many people are born with homosexuality? I admitted that a small section are born with that tendency. Now, this small section, yes, there are changes, hormonal changes, that is obvious. I mean, a whole lot of things that show that for that small population, they are born with a tendency. But there is no chromosomal, there is no gene that actually shows homosexuality. But the point is that, remember you said that 93.3% learnt it. Now, even if you found a gene that determined homosexuality, it wouldn't make it normal. Even if you found, there are many conditions in life that we all accept they are abnormal and yet there is a genetic determination. If something catches you, you bleed and there's a condition, hyphilia, you can beat it. It is genetic, but you know it's abnormal. Single cell disease is genetic, but you know it's abnormal. So the fact that we were born with it does not make it normal. So biological basis is no proof of normal variation. Genetic disorders, as we just mentioned, in fact schizophrenia, one of the most debilitating conditions in mental health, you can look at the MRI brain into it and you'll see changes. Down syndrome, there are changes, it doesn't make it normal. So biology only shows that the abnormal, there's an understanding of how it happens and gives a reason for this, but it doesn't mean it's normal. But what people also say that, yes, I was born with it, so yes, that's how. We need to understand that nature makes mistakes. Nature can make mistakes and that does not make it normal. For instance, there is this condition, conjoint twin. This was born in Caicos. They will go, does it make it normal? Definitely no. Right now, right now, there's a condition in Kumasi which they are trying to open. It doesn't make it normal, even though they were born with it. So being born with it does not make it normal. But can they be helped? And this is what the collision here is about. Yes, they can be helped. There are medical and surgical treatments that can help it, and I'll leave that. Psychological treatments, hormone replacement. The fact that you can give hormones to somebody who doesn't have breasts, for a person to develop breasts, or who has breasts and you can cut and give hormones for the person not to behave like a man, means that whatever the abnormal hormonal imbalance can be corrected. And this is not conversion therapy. And that's the other argument they hammer on, conversion. No, if you are getting somebody to be his or her normal self, that is a conversion. Mrs. Chairman, to conclude, homosexuals or homosexuality is only so-called as an official position. In reality, it is an abnormal condition, it's a mental disorder. And biological basis only tells us that we have an understanding of how it happens so you can correct it. Thank you. And then the last slide, the last slide is that, yeah, these are two small boys and it, oh, one says, oh, I heard there are now 56 genders. Is that true? The other said, no, there are two genders and 54 new mental disorders. And that's all there. Thank you.
Well, Mrs. Chairman, I will run quickly to Professor Hesse because as you know, we have very little time. She will deal with the medical aspect of it in just about five, six minutes, yes. Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Whilst my slides are being put up, I will just quickly go through some of the aspects. No, not this set, not this set. First of all, I think Professor Seh has made, no, not this set, the next, the next set. Okay. Professor Seh has already spoken to a lot of the issues. And I just want to reiterate a few important ones. I am a pediatric surgeon by training. And I can definitely state that from where I sit, sex determination is how one decides what sex one comes out with. He's talked about the genes, we know about the XX chromosomes which indicate female and XY which indicates male. Can I still have my slides? So sex is binary. And whilst we say that, please move on to the next one. Oh, I have the, okay. Okay. So whilst we say that sex is binary, we as pediatric surgeons know that there are a category of children that are born with what you cannot quite determine which gender it obviously belongs to. And oftentimes, you have a combination of the issues which are dictated by the genes, which we call the genotype. The phenotype is the outward appearance. And then a third factor, which is how the hormones that are produced, the androgens and the estrogens are acted on by cells. So there are some cells which should be responsive to androgens, which are not responsive and so will behave with the estrogen component. And there are cells which should respond to estrogens but don't. And therefore, they would show up the androgen component. So you can find abnormalities. And some of these diagrams are just showing you the kind of abnormalities that you can see outwardly. It's either a large clitoris or an abnormal phallus. You can have elements of reproductive system of the female, the male. Invariably, they would not have descended testicles. Sometimes the testicles, the gonads are descended, but you find when you examine them that half of them would have ovarian tissue and half would have the testicular tissue. So there's a whole combination that can occur in these abnormalities. And that is what people term intersex. But we prefer to use the terminology disorders of sexual development because it offers a very wide scope for treatment options. And the bill takes care of that. So we'll talk about that a bit later. Then I just want to refer to gender identity and transsexuals. There's nothing like 56 genders because those are based on feelings, lifestyle feelings. So that would allow any kind of combination. And that's what we are seeing with the plus that is added to the name. Science provides and defines the limits. There must be limits to everything that comes in science. Male and female, he made them. And that is what we see. Gender disorder is another term that is used to categorize children who start off with their biologically determined sex and then go through the phase when they feel they are the opposite sex. Yes. And this usually occurs around puberty. But children at that age have a lot of things that they do. They go to sleep with a cuddly toy, they suck their fingers. These are all phases that the children go through. And there's a lot of experience from people from developed countries who tell us, having worked many decades in this environment-
You have to speed up. You have to speed up.
That this practice of giving them puberty blockers to block the normal changes that would happen for their genetically determined sex has caused a lot of confusion for them. I have a four-year-old grandson. He sees me wearing lipstick and he comes, grandma, I want to wear some of your lipstick. I'll give it to him. In that setting, they would say, oh, he's thinking about being female. Therefore, let's encourage him to become female. And that would then affirm and confuse them even further. So what are the health impacts of sodomy? These are effects that we see as pediatricians as well as physicians, all grad of physicians. Anal rectal prolapse, sexually transmitted infections, genital cancers, warts, anal syphilis. They occur in the general population, but they are at a much higher rate in people who engage in these different practices. And the result, fecal incontinence and destruction of their social lives. And we have lots of patients that have come that are wanting to move away from that kind of lifestyle. It's a public health issue, just like smoking, increased alcohol intake, environmental degradation. They are regulated. We realise through science that the negative effects that they would have would be horrific. So it's foolhardy to think that this should also not be related. And I don't apologize, but there are some graphic images that would show the kind of conditions we are talking about. My dear friend, you can watch it. Okay. So these are some of the conditions that occur and that we see. And they have implications on the economy, the health economy of a country. Because with these increasing numbers, you have to provide the facilities that will deal with them. And that's an additional burden on your purse. The other lifestyles, in fact, if you look at, if you look at our, if you look at our memorandum and the one submitted by the Advocate for Christ, there is an organization called the Lesbian and Gay Medical Association. And, and they list a whole range of medical conditions that their members are more prone and likely to suffer from. So this is the other bit of graphic information showing you the queers, the pansexuals, the bestiality. And this is what we are talking about and this is what we are up against. So what are the solutions provided in the bill? There's provision for the medical care of children with a multidisciplinary team for the disorders of sexual development. The children need protection from sexual abuse, especially sodomy, with sufficient deterrents. And there's psychosocial and medical help for the victims and perpetrators as the bill is proposing. And the holistic sexual therapy system, which integrates all the knowledge that you would expect from various scientific areas together. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to conclude on this note. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman didn't let us finish.
Thank you very much.
He reached a gentleman's agreement.
Thank you very much. We've been very much educated. We may want to find out a few things from your group, Mr. Foreman. Professor Seh introduces the father. There are some, a minute percentage born with that. This bill that you are speaking to proposes that all those within that community must be punished. In one of the slides, I see abnormality, mental disorders. Professor Seh, it interests you that Rankin and myself, we've signed to a bill that would want to consider that any person that attempts suicide, it must be decriminalized. And we'll work on that so soon. We don't want to put them to prison. What is your view on those that we find in this community that practice the LBGTQ? Especially when we cannot distinguish those that are born with it from those that have learnt that from peer grouping. How do we deal with them? Do we throw them in prison as well? Or what would be your proposal? How do we deal with such people? Especially when you say that there are these abnormalities that are, it's coming from the creator or the maker. And how do we correct it? Thank you.
Mrs. Chairman, I will just note these things down. And when we finish, then the experts will respond to it, yeah.
There may be other questions, so, Aravu Sushum.
Chairman, thank you very much for the opportunity. I think that this group of presenters have really opened up the issue more to the committee. And I want to appreciate the presenters for their presentation. It's very, very educative to have the kind of presentation you have given the committee. And we can assure that it definitely will help us moving forward. Now, my only question is that, given the fact that laws are meant to cure mischiefs in society and also laws are meant to deal with matters that at any given point in time are seen to be matters that affect generality of the community of people. Given your statistics, particularly the statistics given by Dr. Kweisi, Kweisi Seh, that showed that only about 0.02% of people in Ghana are involved or are prone to this kind of behaviour. Would you say that with that statistics, we should indeed be worried to the extent that we can pass this piece of legislation into law? And if you agree that we still have to, why would you think that under those circumstances we should?
Aravu Esla Ekavon.
Somebody wants to gag me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to ask a question along the same line. Since there's such a small fraction of the society that are engaged in this practice, why should the 97% to 99% of society feel threatened such that we need to pass legislation against them? And secondly, from Dr. Seh's, from Dr. Seh's presentation, anything which is outside the normal, accepted, is abnormal and can be termed as a mental illness. the normal, accepted, is abnormal and can be termed as a mental illness. I didn't quite get it. Because a lot of left-handed people, persons with disability, extremely clever people, are they also abnormal that need treatment because they're also behaving outside the bell curve, the normal range of the bell curve that you demonstrated? So do they also need treatment so that they can conform to the majority of the population that fall within the normal range? I'm just trying to understand that as well. I have a problem with the language of forcing people to recant or punishing them. We have seen throughout history and even during the Reformation, I mean, the Catholics here, I wanted to save that for them. During the Reformation and the Counter-Reformation era, when people were being accused of being witches because they were not normal, more or less, or did not conform to one prescribed religion at the time or the other. You either recant or you're burnt at the stake. And so that was the stark choice that people are faced with. So your bill is also introducing the same language. You either recant or you're thrown in jail. What kind of an option is that? And it just throws us back to the era when you either conform to the accepted norms of society, which is accepted as normal. So anybody who acted outside those accepted norms are considered abnormal and subject to punishment prescribed by the majority of the people. So what happens to the vulnerable populations who were all not close? Nature makes mistakes, you just said. Who fall within that minority groups? Should they not be subjected to the protection against the tyranny of the majority instead of being forced to accept the punishment meted out to those who don't conform to what are the accepted norms of society? Thank you.
True minority. My, yes. My question goes to Professor Asari. Professor Say, sorry. I know you because we've worked together before. Professor Hesse introduced herself as a pediatric surgeon. You haven't told us what your background is. For the record, not just for the record, I know you. I know my senior, Mrs. Fuamone, he's a lawyer. Yes, so please.
Introduce him actually, but then.
Introduction now. Okay.
Well, Chairman, I did introduce him, but then.
Mr. Chairman, do I, or you take it together with other persons? Okay, so Professor Akwesi Osay, Chief Executive, Mental Health Authority. But I'm here as a member of the coalition. Thank you very much. No, still, but former head of a class academic school, but still current head of mental health service.
What's your question? Okay. Who is that? Gaku Asante Batin.
Yes, Prof. Ndechi. When we watched your slides, we were convinced that some conditions or some abnormal conditions people were born with it. And with the LGBTQ, you also indicated the percentage of people who were born with it. My dilemma is that some people or some children were born with one hand, some with their hairs together. And sometimes people live with such abnormalities until death. So if someone through his, through no fault of his, has been born with this condition and it's not through any fault of him or her that he finds himself under this condition, do we punish such a person if he is to live with this condition by criminalizing that situation?
Bravo.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to suggest that we can answer a few.
Okay.
So we don't get.
I wanted to take all the questions, then you answer, then we break for lunch. But if they are getting too many, you can answer them.
Yes, they are getting too many. And I would love to deal with the. Okay. Well, I wanted to take the.
Please go ahead and answer them and ignore the side comments. We'll come to you later.
Chairman, now let Dr. Akwesi deal with the born with it and explain what it means, born like that, so that he can explain. And Professor Osafu is also available.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so how do we deal with people who were born with the condition? Do we criminalize them, do we jail them? In fact, on the other hand, those born with it, the coalition is there to support them. Indeed, the real enemies of the LGBTQ people are those who see the condition as wrong and say, "Oh, yeah, fine, well done." They are glamorizing it. We want them to recognize.
Prof.
Yes, please.
What if those with those conditions are not ready to be helped? What do we do? We are saying this because the background is that we are protecting all manner of people. That's what the Constitution says. So there are abnormalities. Someone is born abnormal and the person is not ready to change his condition. Just like I asked, the mental disorder, if it comes to hospital, I don't think that, I'm sure you were running into problems when you were picking them from the streets and relatives were not coming. You felt that they abandoned them on you. How do we deal with such people?
Indeed, the point is that what we are saying because of the harm to themselves and to others, they should be encouraged to see it. It's like somebody abusing drugs and that's all recognized that we have a way of getting the person to recognize that your condition is harmful to you ultimately. We call that pre-contemplation. If the person does all recognize that he has a problem, we take him through counseling, that makes him recognize he has a problem. Whilst he recognizes he has a problem, there's a gamut of solution, nothing at all. Now, let me quickly link it to the other question that came that if I have an abnormality, does it mean mentally ill? Not necessarily. Indeed, for a while of time, I left out a slide that shows that some abnormalities are actually desirable. It might interest members of the House to know that twin pregnancy is actually an abnormality. Twin pregnancy. Because the normal thing is one D, one F, one pregnancy, one baby. So for you to have a pregnancy, that gives two babies, actually scientifically, it's abnormal. But it's abnormality we all like and we applaud. IQ, intelligence quotient, most of us hundred, that's minus ten. If you have one sixty, it's abnormal. But it's abnormality that we are all happy with. So some abnormalities are desirable. So the abnormality that causes pain or distress or to the society, then it brings you to life for you to recognize it. But it's not necessarily every abnormality that is bad.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just respond to, respond to a few things. Thank you. First is that we should not assume that human behavior is cast in brick and stone. That is, it doesn't resonate with psychological science. In fact, there is evidence, strong evidence, that human beings can change, but the question is why don't they change? They choose not to change as a response. The second point is this, that under guided therapy, human beings can even alter their personality. In fact, there is evidence to the effect that a number of certain cases that psychologists do see, including obsessive-compulsive disorder, depression, eating disorder, some of them can have as much as over forty percent genetic contribution. And yet, psychologists and therapists are able to help people change behaviors. I'd like to just make that comment. The third point is this. Now, the fact of what we are discussing here regarding to LGBT and all the other plus-plus was purely based on a certain ideology and not science. And at that point, we stress clearly. And the reason is that if you look at the gamut of evidence from all around the world, you can see that indeed people who are involved in these behaviors are ready to look for help. And yet, there's currently a very strong political ploy to block them from accessing help. Even by the persons who are looking for such help. That's what we call the so-called conversion therapy that we have made a lot of, you know, comment on. This is, this is inimical to your health, this is dangerous to your health. That is actually not true. I'm a therapist. I've worked in Ghana for close twenty years. I've worked on persons with this kind of behaviors. Sometimes we assume that we are speaking for them, that they are okay. That's not the truth. Mr. Chairman, kindly as we see here, Ghana is grappling with about twenty percent of young people who are suicidal. In fact, the last time I checked on data, about forty-seven percent, there are quite a number, just a few of those, but quite interesting. Just about seventy-four percent of those who identify as LGBT among a group of students, forty-seven percent of them reported that they have self-harming behavior tendencies. And this resonates with the literature on mental health conditions in this population. If you already have overstretched mental health, I mean, for lack of better word, you have rather a mental health system that is currently not being properly funded and you have a system where.
Let me come in, Dr. Prof. We have actually gotten the import of what you are saying medically, their behavior is abnormal. There was a question that I posed and I'm not sure you are comfortable answering, that because they are abnormal, do we throw them into jail? And I saw two sponsors of the bill had their hand up. If you want to come in now.
I, I wanted to.
I want to conclude on that.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, because I wanted to just reflect a bit on that. Now, the question is whether we want to throw them to jail. But as a layperson, I'm not a lawyer, but when I, at least I've done a reading of the bill three times, I see in this bill a potential to support and to help persons who may, for example, say, "I am in this condition and I need help." But I agree with your point that there may be people who may not want to say, "I want help." Now, if the person says, if I approach a person and the person says, "I don't need to help," it is not my job to criminalize the person at that point. But in the bill, if the person is found to engage in certain clear acts stated in the bill, then he has himself to be blamed. But the point, the point I'm making is that no therapies will ever force anybody in this condition that you have to receive help. Usually, they will naturally come around and say, "Look, I think I need help." So that's the point. But the point I'm making finally is that nobody can say that I just met you on the street and to put it in a look up and say, "Sure, we're TQ. You look like, you look like an LGBT person, so we should just..." That's another point. But the point is that are there clear indications of what the bill seeks to criminalize if the person is engaged in those activities? Then, of course, the issues of criminality are triggered. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I just want to find out from the coalition and from the professionals who are here, is there any clear evidence of increased psychological strain on persons alleged to be in this act that you have come across from the mental health practice and psychology? When you see persons who are supposedly straight and persons who are supposedly part of this group, is there a distinct distinction between those two groups from a psychological strain point of view?
What they answered, you are one of the proponents of the bill. And in the light of what they have said, that we are educated here that medically, we have people that are born with that. Would you still say that they be thrown into prison if they don't seek the help as proposed in the bill?
Chairman, are you inviting me to answer this question? I thought you had reserved for the clause-by clause consideration, but if you want me to, if you want me to answer here, I'm very well placed. But I thought you said we should do it at the clause-by clause.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think we have the experts here. So the psychologist is also, I think, a presentation that would have responded to that question. So unfortunately, we couldn't do it. Let him respond.
Yes, I, I want to make some distinction in the abnormality. The fact that someone has some abnormality does not automatically determine the person's sexuality.
Please, I'm sorry, can you please introduce yourself?
So my name is Dr. Numanata. I'm a medical doctor and clinical psychologist. And I see a lot of people in that community. So the abnormality does not automatically determine sexuality. And so there is no gene that is responsible for that. And it's been established scientifically. So for example, someone.
Doctor, you are confusing me now.
No, no, no. So I'm not, I'm not confused.
Now, let me make it clearer.
So can I explain?
Those that, the question we posed is that those that find themselves in this net of abnormality, the bill is proposing that they may seek help when they come forward and then there will be people like you that will assist. If they don't come, the bill is saying that when they are found, they be thrown to prison. What's your response to that?
I think that we need to be able to differentiate between the different types of people in that community so that we can actually be able to apply the right measures for each group. There are people who are actual victims of that practice. So for example, a girl who is raped at age eight becomes a lesbian and the rape is traumatic. That is why she chose that lifestyle. For example, a boy who was sodomized at age nine and started that gay lifestyle, obviously that person needs help. And we have a lot of them in that community. And so.
Those things already are criminal. For instance, a girl that is defiled and whatnot, defilement is one of the, it has a very high punishment. So if you, if you sodomize a boy, that is an offense, a serious offense in this kind. So when it comes to children, the laws protect children generally. But what we want to find out, an grown adult, that you have educated us that he is abnormal and nature, it is not through that fault, through his fault, it is the fault of nature. He doesn't want to change from how he is created. What do we do to such a person?
Well, Mr. Chairman, let me help you because I think it's a legal question you are asking. Now, the bill proposes a process by which such people are dealt with, like a kleptomaniac. As he has a tendency to steal. If he is stealing and we say, "Oh, my brother, this thing you have with psychological..." And there's a process of determining the recantation. I'll address that by my lovely sister, Elsla. I'll address in two seconds. But there's a process of determining through the court system, during investigation, during arrest, during trial and all of that, as to whether or not you are in that position. If you then say, "No," like as a kleptomaniac, you are stealing, but we realize that it is a psychological problem. If we say, "Come out of it, let us help you," and you say, "No," clearly means you want to engage in something that is not only hurts yourself but hurts society. Because we know the effect of, let's say, a gay activity on, in terms of rates of HIV and then other transmissions and all sorts of things, the data of which we all have here. So if the person refuses the sort of treatment procedure. So if the person refuses the sort of treatment, procedure, and what they have been offered, then clearly, he, he is joining the people who say, "I love it, I like it, I want to go ahead with it." But in fact, in law, the law allows the mental health authority to go out and restrain people who think, because in their minds, they think they're okay, but they are not. And if the law, if the, the, the mental health would determine that this person is not well, the law gives them the power to restrain such people, especially schizophrenic. Since those who suffer from schizophrenia, they think that, hey, what he's seeing is beautiful. He's seen a beautiful lady. So if, and he wants to have sex with her, maybe it's not a lady. The law allows you to restrain him. So the simple answer to your question, such people should be, if he refuses to be helped, should he be thrown into jail? The answer is yes. Why?
Lawyer, the process here is that we want to be assisted.
Yes.
You, you cite stealing, for instance. That is criminal in our books.
Yes.
Now, we are yet to decide on whether we'll make this criminal or not.
Oh, but we know by section 104, the gay activities are criminalized.
And that is, yes, but this one, the bill before us, if you've gone through that, that never talks about 104. Now, the bill before us is proposing
Yes.
that people who practice this
Yes.
must be thrown to jail. Medically, we have found out that there are some of them, a minute percentage for that matter, zero point zero two. But some of the zero point zero two, it is not their making. And what I want to find out from the medical point of view, and you have learned people amongst you, how do we treat these people if they do not want to be, to get an assistance and that they are comfortable with the way they are treated?
You, you, you see, Mr. Chairman, you are working from an assumption. You are saying that if they don't, the question, what is the percentage? What is the evidence you have that people are going to say, "Oh, I am not, uh, I am doing, I'm in homosexual activity, but I don't want to be helped?" The evidence is contrary to what you're saying. The evidence from all the psychologists and all the practitioners is that none of them will, and that's the real homosexuals, those who really need help, and we deal with them constantly. In fact, I have...
For your information, Honorable Fuamone, the group of people comes to me to say that they are homosexuals, they belong to this group, and that they are being, the, the, the way society is treating them, they are beating them, they are hooting at them, and whatnot. And that's how they want to be.
Well, well, Mr. Chairman, that is why I'm saying that those who say they are being beaten, the law says nobody has a right to initiate instant justice. And that aspect is even criminalized.
And they are saying that...
Mr. Chairman, if I can finish.
By introduction, that they are actually involved in criminal activity. And they say, "Oh, okay, but we will not change. So we, we, uh, if we will not change, then we must be allowed to do it."
I find that in Congress, it doesn't really hit with me. Because what you're doing, if the person is gay, then it's a criminal offense. So if you're engaged in it and you say you don't need help, then what are you supposed to be doing? You know, so my position is that in reality, those who come to you with those statements, it is mere propaganda. And we've indicated here, they just, there are those who want to glamorize. There's, a lot of them have been paid to do, we'll give you the evidence at the right time. Indeed, you, when we said that the office had been closed, they have opened another office. Eighty thousand dollars was used to purchase that office. As we sit here now, there are NGOs who have been funded and are doing community push for LGBT movement. There is a lot of activity pushing for this. So I can't understand how somebody, who is engaged in something that, from all the scientific evidence we've thrown here, clearly is problematic. And I can tell you, no real homosexual will want to stay in what he's doing. Because having sex through the anus, losing the penis, truth is, how can that be proper? Or a lady opening herself up to be licked by animals, that can't be right. So if the person says, "I want to stay in it," then he needs help.
Let me ask you another question.
Yes.
Are you aware of oral sex?
Yes.
Are you aware that this bill criminalizes, criminalizes it?
We say we're criminalizing oral sex between same-sex persons. That is what, that is, no, that is what, that is what... No, we say, if you look at the law, the law actually indicates...
This bill is proposing that
Yes, it's proposing.
Oral sex is abnormal.
No, 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 no.
Yes, it's one of the...
No, but what we, what we are saying, okay, well, okay.
Now, now, you, you, you go back.
Well, I'm, I'm, no, I was going to, I couldn't respond to it, but the proponents of the bill will want to probably help. But I'm indicating that in the law, the definition under section six of what constitutes LGBT plus activities are all listed. And we state that it's oral sex between same-sex partners. That is what we have criminalized. That is what we've criminalized. But if you look at section 104, even anal sex between, uh, so-called heterosexual, I don't, I don't want to think that it is the opposite of the other. Uh, heterosexuals are the opposite of, uh, what's it called, homosexual. It's just like saying me sitting here. And you know, Mr. Chairman, let me, let me just explain something to you. For example, as I sit here, as I sit here, I'm not the opposite of Esla sitting there. I'm an Albeo. Albinism is a recessive gene. She is the normal gene. She is the straight gene, right? So I'm indicating that at the end of the day, you cannot say that I'm her opposite. No, that's not how you got to put it. So it is not as if to say heterosexuals are the opposite of homosexual, uh, uh, activity. No, that, that shouldn't be the case. And if somebody doesn't want to be helped, then clearly, he has gone beyond what he's doing and he needs, uh, to be restrained from, uh, you know, doing acts that will be contrary to what our society and our values... I mean, an example is the kleptomaniac I've referred to. Can I deal quickly with Esla's question about recantation? Now, the word recant just means you recite from your position. And we will actually, the process of recantation is not new. Currently in Finland, there is a law that say, that bans what they call hate speech. If a Christian states a Christian position as to the fact that the Bible allows homosexual activity, that is considered to be hate speech. There's a member of the British, uh, Finnish parliament who's currently being prosecuted. And the law says that if that offender recants, they use the same word, recant, then he can be admitted to probation. So it is not a new word. And the word just means you move away from that position. And the supervision from saying that you've recanted will be done under proper psychological help so that people don't use this as an excuse to run away from the punishment. Now, if you look at the structure of the law, the structure of the law is to ensure because the homosexual strategy, as we have identified, is that we distinguish between those who are genuinely homosexuals, the ones that have been described through peer pressure, hormonal problems, uh, what's it called, uh, psychosocial problems. Those people are the ones we want to guide away from that behavior. And from all the experience this coalition has had over eight years of dealing with hundreds of homosexuals, not one have we found to be the classic way, you know, example, "Oh, I don't want to be helped." They all want help. Those are the ones we want to guide away. So even when they are, during investigation, during arrest, during sentencing, even incarceration, if they realize that, oh, there's a problem and they say they need help, then there will be no incarceration. So really, the purpose of the law is to guide those who really need help to come and seek the help that they want. But those who want to fund it, who want to promote it, who want to advertise it, why would you want to promote something you are prohibiting? And the data and the statistics are clear on how promotion, I mean, we're talking about demoralization. If you say you like it, you love it, you wouldn't change, and you are allowed to form class in schools, in colleges, that is a push. My dear sister talked about ninety-seven percent, what are the three percent threatened? Sweetheart, if you go to your school at Infancy Man, it is getting worse. If you go to Infancy Man, we were there for two weeks. If you go to Wesley Girls, if you, it is getting worse by the day. The evidence that we see is that in the secondary schools and in the universities, there's a pileup. And since we started this campaign, we have been inundated. You have no idea the number of these young people that we need to guide away from such a behavior. And if we don't, the strategy of the LGBT more, you saw the agenda, they have brought money into this country. About two hundred million dollars.
Okay, I think we've had enough of you, and you've really made your point. And I think you are becoming emotional, sorry about that.
Oh, not really.
But you have educated us a lot.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't, I, I'm not too sure about the word emotional.
You are becoming passionate.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Esla is more passionate than I am. And two...
She hasn't spoken yet.
Two, no, she has, she has. And I take it, I, I take it, I take it that, I take it that you are not using the word passionate as being perjuring.
Yeah.
And let me explain. Mr. Chairman, if you have a second?
I'm trying to catch you because it's time for lunch.
No, you should allow me to, to speak. You see, I am passionate because I see these people on a daily basis.
Now, you see?
Yes, I'm explaining.
People believe in what you are saying. People don't believe in what you are saying.
Very few of them.
And yes, even if it is one person.
That is so.
And we here as a committee, we have a responsibility to listen to everybody and make our judgments.
That is so.
So we've heard enough of what you have said. Even to the extent of explaining medically the consequences of all this. And psychologically, from the psychological point, from the mental point of view, from the physical point of view, this is a well-researched, uh, position. So we are grateful, but we see, members of parliament, I'm not saying we are old, but Honorable Avuka is amongst us.
Well, Mr. Chairman, can I just...
We have already exceeded our time.
Okay.
And we may want to break for lunch now. And we would have to break for, it's fourteen thirty-three. So you would want to come back at three fifteen to continue. And that's when we are going to hear from the, uh, the Calick bishops. My lord, uh, Texan himself is here. So we would have to, yes, they've been waiting all this while. Yes, so we invite our guests also to the lunch. And then we would have to go for lunch at the Job 600. There is a canteen, uh, that honorable members canteen. So thank you for coming. Those who are finished, uh, you don't need to be here, but if you want to hear for that and the lunch, we'll be grateful to actually have lunch with you. The media, they are also invited to dine with us. Thank you.